Council Agenda Township Parsippany Troy Hills Regular Township Council Meeting of October 22nd, 2024. Introduction Posting of Notice Adequate notice to this meeting has been provided in accordance with the requirements of the Open Public Meetings Law by filing a notice in the office of the Township Clerk and by posting the meeting notice on the bulletin board at the Municipal Building on January 4th, 2024, where it has remained posted since that date. A legal notice appeared in the Daily Record and the North Star Ledger on January 8th, 2024. Can I ask everybody to please stand for the plaque salute? Roll call, Mr. Hernandez?
Here.
Mr. McGrath?
Here.
Mr. Mysella?
Here.
Mr. Neglio?
Here.
Mr. Karifi?
Here.
Also in attendance are Mayor James Barbario, Business Administrator Jamie Cryon, Township Attorney Michael Lively, Municipal Clerk Caleb Madden, Council President. We have a call, may I begin?
Yes, please.
Upcoming meetings, November 12th, 2024, at 7:00 PM is the agenda meeting and November 26th, 2024, at 7:00 PM is the regular meeting. No ordinances on for second reading at this time, moving into the public session. At this time, I'd like to entertain a motion to open the public session.
Motion.
Motion made by Mr. Neglio, seconded by Ms. Hernandez. Roll call, Mr. Hernandez?
Yes.
Mr. McGrath?
Yes.
Mr. Mysella?
Yes.
Mr. Neglio?
Yes.
Mr. Karifi?
Yes.
Okay, the floor is open to the public, you can speak on any matter you'd like, you have five minutes to speak. When you come up to the mic before you speak, if you can please sign in, thank you so much.
Alright, good evening.
Good evening.
Everyone. Vijay Panchamia from Glenmont Commons, been here a few times before. Last time when we were here in month of August for Glenmont Roads. I believe, you know, town is, you know, having a lawsuit with the builder and you were expecting response back in 35 days, which ended on September 27th. It's been about three and a half weeks, so we wanna know if there is any progress and looking for some positive resolution. Again, every month and every two months that is passing by, roads are not getting better. And we are worried about upcoming, you know, winter with all the potholes and everything. It is a safety concern and quality of life issue for all residents. And you will see many homeowners here today, right? Because in our personal group, there's a lot of concerns that everybody is raising. There are young kids who are driving their bikes and they are falling off because of the potholes. And as you know, Glenmont streets are on the slope. You imagine a kid coming on a bike on a slope, even if with the helmet, going on a pothole or a manhole that's coming up three inches up and falling, what kind of injuries they gonna have? Right? So it's a really safety concern. We have seniors who are walking on these roads, trying to avoid the potholes. Cars are trying to avoid the potholes and going, veering towards the corner of the road so that they can find a good way to have their vehicle pass through. These are all safety concerns, right? And it's been more than a year since we've been coming here. We started bringing this issue up here back in last September. It's already October 24th, right? One year passed, we are really looking for some, you know, positive update, some ETA to resolve this, some way of resolving it, right? Just, you know, keeping it as is and, you know, whether builder is doing it or not, the fact is, half of the residents are single family homeowners, right? They are paying full taxes to the town, they have nothing to do with homeowners association. So I've heard in the past, oh, HOA has not given roads over to the town or whatever. We don't care as a single family homeowner, I have nothing to do with HOA. I'm paying my full taxes for last end number of years. I'm gonna file a tax appeal for not giving me the benefit and the service, other than, you know, other municipal surveys, I understand that. But road maintenance is a big part as well. Twenty-five years has happened on this road, it has taken its toll. So we want road to be maintained, to be repaid, right? I'm looking for an update, if there is any update from the builder and what is your plan of action going in the future to address this?
Alright, so as you know, the complaint was filed, the builder requested an extension of time, which we grant because they'll just file a motion with the court and the court will grant it because that's pretty standard. His answer is due on Sunday, which would mean it gets filed on Monday. So we'll have an answer from the builder on Monday. So, I mean, it's litigation, so it's gonna take some time. Right, 35 days was done, he asked for an extension of time, we granted him an extension of time, that's routine, because again, if, I don't wanna get into the litigation strategy, but this is pretty basic stuff. You always grant one adjournment, one extension, because if they have to file a motion with the court, all you do is anger the judge, right? Because they say, hey, you know, they're entitled to one extension. So that goes to the 28th, which is this Sunday, so it's due on Monday. If it's due on a Sunday, it automatically goes to the next day.
Okay, I'm Tezira Miktolaria.
Speak into the, speak into the mic, sir.
Speak into the mic.
Yeah, thank you.
Yes. You understand I'm frustrated. Tezira Miktolaria, I'm living in same community Glenmont, we coming for years. I am senior, I'm walking every day, everybody know. I walk, I have to walk through every step, there, there, car coming. My wife injured on this road, she's taking physical therapy because of these stupid roads. Are you, anybody listening or listening, I know that they're listening, but they're doing, the bike, anybody doing anything? Okay, then you say, builder, how many years ago builder left? Anybody did anything to builder? How many years pass away? Why you give this extension? This is many years ago, builder left. What is township responsibility to do anything about the builder at the left? What is they supposed to do when they left? Are, are we, just don't listen, just, don't listen, do something. Do you understand I'm a 74-year-old, I'm walking every day, I can't go out to walk because of this road. I can't go to walk, I stay in my house all the time. I, I don't think anybody is going to do something about this. I don't think they care about the Glenmont community. If they do, they really serious to do, they would have done long time ago. I don't think they care about this community at all. I'm sorry, I'm frustrated, I'm, I'm a very senior old fellow. I can't go, I stay in my house, I walk, afraid to walk. I don't think anybody really serious to do and say anything about it. If you do it, then you did long time ago. I'm just, that's, I'm sorry, I'm frustrated, that's why my voice is little bit, again, I'm alright for this, but because I'm, you understand my situation. Thank you again for listening again, I've been coming for one years and I don't know, again, when this will end. Maybe I went to doctor office, I mean, my wife is already, she's taking physical therapy right now. She's sitting here too.
Can I say, can I ask a question?
Yes.
How, first of all, is she okay? I know she's doing therapy, but is...
She's, she's okay.
Okay, so I'm sorry to hear you so frustrated.
Doctor said, go to the physical therapy, they done it. I mean, you know, I taking walk, I hand her, we were walking together. I'm, I'm 74-year-old, I can't go out in the road.
I know.
Anybody look at the road, anybody come in, how many people come and look at the road over there? How many come people came and look at the road?
I have seen it, I'm just asking, isn't, isn't the builder, there's some responsibility when people get hurt?
Well, yeah, exactly, because that's part of the lawsuit, is that, and just so the record's clear, because I don't know that this gentleman's been here before, I know there's some that are in the audience that know this, but up until August of last year, they were prohibited from dedicating these roads to the town. It's right in their file documents, it says that the homeowners association could not dedicate the roads to the town. Why the builder would do that, I don't know, but it wasn't until August of last year, because they wanted the roads fixed and they said, well, guess what, they're your roads, that then they changed their bylaws and covenants to allow them to dedicate them to the town. So now, they wanna dedicate them to the town, but our engineers calculated a $4.8 million to bring the roads up to the town standard before you take them over. So I understand the frustration, but the town couldn't have taken these over.
I understand.
Until they changed their, and, and again, that was the builder's decision. So now, the township, we, we met with the builder a couple of times, nothing was achieved, so then last resort, litigation was filed. So the town's filed a complaint, it's just gonna, it's unfortunate, it's taken some time, but...
So God forbid something happens, they could be sued.
Yes, it happened already. I can't go out of my road, I can't go, I pray to fall down and go to hospital, who's gonna take care of me then? There is nobody to take. How the land, you know, the builder can get away from this township? My question, how he can get away from the township? Can you answer anybody?
Well, he's getting sued, he's getting sued, so he doesn't, but the thing is...
How many after, how many years?
But, but here's the thing, you couldn't even, your bylaws for the homeowners association prohibited them from turning these roads over to the town.
We are single owners, I'm living that...
No, 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 I understand that, but it's the same road, it's the roads that go through the townhouse development.
He left how many years ago? How we can get away from the township? My question, how we can get away from the township? Without, must be some kind of legal support.
Well, no, those roads were never gonna be dedicated to the township, that's the point.
But how we can get away?
I don't know, I don't know why the homeowners association... We're gonna find, we're gonna find out in the litigation.
Township should have asked me, it's time to give away, you know. I don't understand his whole procedure, I'm sorry again, I apologize for my, you know...
It's okay, we understand, we understa-, we understand.
Hello, my name is Onkara Murundi, I'm also from the Glenmont Commons. Same issue, I think I've been coming to these meetings for a long time. Previous...
Sir, can you get closer to the mic?
Yeah, previous month, right? There was a discussion about issuing a municipal bond to address this one. I think council members suggested this one to mayor. I would like to know what is the status of that, what is the progress of that?
Is that your only question, sir?
That's the question, yeah, I, I need to know the status.
Can you repeat the question, sir, I'm sorry, just for the record?
Last month, during the same discussion, there was a suggestion from the council that can we, can we go with the municipal bond?
Municipal bond, okay, so he said there's a suggestion from the council, if we can go with a municipal bond, correct?
Yeah.
Okay.
What is the status of that?
And what's the status of that?
Well, the problem is, there's a problem with that, and that is, I don't remember that conversation, but if it was had, these are not township roads, so I guess you could...
You can't bond private property. We cannot, that's, that's statute, you can't, we can only bond what we own.
So the suggestion was wrong?
Huh?
That suggestion was not, was wrong.
We don't own the roads.
No, I agree, but suggestion came last month.
Yeah, no, so, so, my suggestion, I asked the question.
He made the comment, I know.
Yeah, he made the, I mean, I'm not making up, mayor.
So, so, 100% I asked it, and that was the open question, was can we do that?
Yeah.
I had no clue, right? So my goal is to try to help you folks with all the props you guys are talking about, right? So one thing, constantly I'm gonna say, is there a different alternative?
Yeah.
We keep going down one route, is there another route we should be looking while we do it? So that was really more the question, and then, as we said, it's, we don't own them, so we can't.
We cannot issue them, okay, thank you.
My name is Bob Venedzia, I live in Parsippany. There are two resolutions, 176 and 177, that appear on tonight's printed agenda that do not appear on the agenda posted to the township website. So they must have been added in the last 24 hours. Why? What types of construction are being proposed for these two sites? And do the developers plan on asking for a pilot for these two sites? It's my belief that sole purpose of these resolutions is to begin the process of sneaking in two pilots before the end of the year, following the same pattern that occurred at the tail end of last year. I hope that I'm wrong, thank you.
You wanna answer that? Yeah, these are just resolutions, you know, asking the planning board to do a study as to whether or not these properties should be placed in an area of need of redevelopment. You're not making any commitment beyond that, it's just, should it be done? So the planning board, there'll be public hearings, the planner will do a report, and then make a recommendation back to the township council. So these are just authorizing them to go ahead and do the study, it's not committing you to anything other than that.
Council President, just real quickly, also, if I'm correct, these developers reached out to members of the public, to the neighborhood, on their own, to a community meeting at the library, is that, is that correct?
It wasn't at the library.
Okay.
Wasn't my neighborhood, and I'm right near that, too.
When was this meeting?
I don't know.
There was a meeting held between the neighborhood that it directly is next to, leaders of that neighborhood, many members of the neighborhood, and just so that they could go over it with them. There was nothing promised, nothing, it's just, they're looking to do something with the buildings, so...
Considering that I've been asking about some of these buildings for months, and I'm a neighbor and I'm on council, I wish I knew about that meeting.
I believe, it had nothing to do with the, this meeting had nothing to do with the town council.
Okay.
It had everything to do with the particular neighborhood that it would affect. So that's all they met with, was just that neighborhood. This had nothing to do with town council or...
In, in this meeting, did they talk about, so I'm assuming this is for four gate hole? That this meeting took place nearby? It was for four gate hole?
I believe there was a meeting for both locations.
Oh, for both?
Yes.
Did the developer say what they planned to put up?
It was, like I said, it was a meet, it was not a meeting for us, it was a meeting for the neighborhood. I don't know what exactly, I was not at, I was at one meeting, I was not at the other, so I don't know exactly what was discussed.
Okay.
And even if they said, Council President, if they talked about doing, you know, balloon building factories there, or, you know, anything that could be incredible or not good, it's not binding, because it's, this is the first step in the redevelopment process to go to the planning board, see if it's actually needed to see an area in need of redevelopment. So, but, that's where it's at with that.
Is there, is there any way that we could just, as a precautionary measure, get these developers to appear before us, so we could ask them these questions before this goes forward? And the reason I'm asking that is, you know, number one, I had no chance to do any due diligence on my own, because to my knowledge, this was not disclosed to, to myself or, or the public in advance at this meeting. And I think, you know, in light of previous experience, if we're voting on redevelopment agreements, they've all led to pilots, so that's why I would just wanna...
It was not a public meeting, it was an invite only.
Let me just, this is not a redevelopment agreement, all this is, is directing the planning board to do a study. So they will do a study, they'll have public hearings, then the planner will submit a report to them, they'll make a determination and a recommendation to the council as to whether or not you should do that. So ultimately, it's all gonna come back here, and the purpose of these resolutions is just, they're statutory criteria to deem an area in need of redevelopment. So what the planning board does is looks at it and says, okay, we think they meet these three criteria or whatever. That doesn't mean the council has to adopt it, then it comes back here, and then you decide whether or not you wanna deem it an area in need of redevelopment, and then somebody would come in and propose a, you know, whatever their plan is, they would come in and propose it at that time. So this is just, planning board take, because if the planning board comes back and says, we don't think it meets the criteria, it, it ends there. You know, it's, there's nothing more to be done. But if they recommend it, again, that's your decision to make, you know, whether or not you declare it to be one, but they're the ones that are charged under the statute with doing the studies. So this is just, hey, we want you to look at this, do you think it meets the statutory criteria? That doesn't bind the council to accept that, that's like, okay, well, we appreciate that, but we're not gonna move forward, or we are gonna move forward. And then you go down, go through the process, but like I said, this is just preliminary, is an area in need of redevelopment or not, there's statutory criteria, the planning board applies, and then it will come back here.
Kandalski, Kandalski Parsippany, so let me just ask a clarifying question. What was the process for putting this on the agenda? I assume the developer wants this study done, how did that translate into putting this on the agenda?
Well, anybody can ask for an area for the study to be done, like anybody could just...
And, and then...
And it would happen, but it starts here.
Who decides to make it a resolution? Who agrees to make it a resolution?
Well, it has to be by resolution.
Who, who decides that? I mean, who, who accepts the request from the developer and then says, okay, let's, let's put this on?
The council votes on it.
No, but you haven't got to the vote yet, it's, it's on the agenda, I'm saying, how did they get on the agenda?
Yeah. Well, the process was, I walked in and I saw two areas in needs of, need of redevelopment resolutions that were on this agenda that weren't on the agenda the township clerk sent to me, wasn't on what was posted prior to walking in. And had there been more time, I would have loved to have been able to research this and be able to vote for it, but it just feels to me that this, this last minute addition is, is something more...
I understand that, I'm saying, how did it get on the agenda? Somebody had to physically do something to put it on the agenda.
Usually would happen, just, just real quick, first and foremost, the process is being done properly. So whatever you're hearing here tonight, we're doing it properly. Number one, the whoever, and I wasn't in those meetings, the, the developer or the attorney will go to our redevelopment attorney. Our redevelopment attorney will then draft a resolution for the council to approve or not to approve. That has been like that for I can't tell you how long. So there's no, nothing surprises of being done here. The next step, like our, our counselor said, goes to the planning board, the planning board makes a recommendation and, and to the council, if the planning board agrees with the redevelopment process. It's been this way for years.
I'm just asking...
But that's how it usually gets on, we have a redevelopment attorney that reviews and...
Yeah, I just didn't understand that step, that the redevelopment attorney can accept that and then I presume ask Mr. Karifi to put it on the agenda.
Council President?
Council President had to step out right now, so...
So, yeah, there's, when I look at it, when these come in from the, from the redevelopment attorney, I look at it to make sure that there's an escrow agreement, so our professionals are being paid by whomever it is, so the township's not putting it out. Sometimes it takes a little bit of time, that's really what this is. So it's saying, following the New Jersey state statutes that clearly break down the redevelopment process, that the planning, the governing body asks the planning board to take a look at it, to do a study, they do a study, so the town's not paying for that study.
Okay, that's another question, yeah.
This is, this is, there's an escrow agreement as part of this.
Okay, alright, that's helpful, thanks.
Good evening, everyone, mayor, including council members. My name is Srinivas Thoda, I'm a resident of Glenmont Commons. I'm a proud resident of Parsippany, but the condition where I am living is not satisfying my primary rights. Where I can go on a road, walk freely without having any safety concern. So I have two roads, one is Miller Road connecting to Mountain Way, and the other one is Old Dover Road connecting further to Catch Road and other things. So I don't have any walkway, where I can cross the roads, I can press the signal to cross one side of the road to other, I don't have any walkway. So during that condition, I have various environmental condition in US, you know that? So I, I am being this resident since five years, I don't see any improvements on that roads, and not even crosswalk. I cannot cross from one side to other side without having any doubt. So I am looking at the speeding vehicles which are more than 25, and I doubt whether I can return safely to my home or not. So I need the action plan, immediate action plan to walk on the road safely, going to a Mountain Way park and come back, because I don't have a park in my community. So I need to take my kids, take my dog to the park and come back safely. So can somebody look into that safety concerns and construct a walkways or crosswalks across the roads? So the road condition of Miller Road connecting to Mountain Way is very bad. I can put you some pictures or anything, builder just patched up, but it's not completely done. So even though walking is very hazardous on that road, I cannot walk freely. So I need some answers to immediately address my concern. So I cannot keep inside the house, without walk, I may, I may fall sick. I think everybody knows, so I need to count 10,000 steps every day to make my healthy, to serve the US nation. So I am an immigrant worker here, I am supporting US economy as a larger perspective. So I love US more than whatever my birth country, but I need a basic rights, so please address my concern, thank you.
Good evening, everybody. This is just basically a check on the last month, we had said the same thing, that Miller Road to Mountain Road, and we were told that you guys will visit it, so somebody has visited that road? So nobody has visited?
No.
So what do we do now?
So do you have any other questions? Wait, see if he has any other questions, do you have any other questions?
No, the question is that, like, what is, like, how do we trust you guys, that today you say that we'll go and see, and after one month, then nothing happens? The road condition, you are not driven on that. You drive a bike, I can bet you, if you can keep your handle straight, you will go left side or you will go right side. It's very dangerous, like, I have driven personally, I drive it, it's very dangerous, and people are now driving in the middle of the road, because they cannot drive in the side, because there is no white line, there is no yellow line, everything, everybody, everywhere just basically cracks.
Are you referring to what the gentleman just talked about?
Exactly the same, yeah, we all are referring to the same thing. And there is no litigation, there is no ownership, that they are, those roads are completely owned by the township.
No, I understand. So the intersection that I used to talk about, I can't, I'm trying to picture it, I've been to Glenmont Commons, I've seen the road.
Not intersection, from intersection, towards the Danville Jeep Road, right? The moment you enter that Danville section, it looks like the USA, and before that, it is Africa. No, it's so different, I'm telling you, we, we were seeing it daily, day in, day out. And you know, like, had it been a normal rough road, we, we can understand, this is dangerous, actually. I was driving in my motorbike the other day, and I couldn't keep it balanced on that day, because there were so many, so wide cracks are there. The moment your tire goes inside, you, you imbalance.
You're talking about where the construction, where that new development is, where that construction, that whole, that three-way?
Yes, yes, yeah.
Okay.
So, and you know, like, even though...
I'm driving on that, I, I drive there almost every day, I, I know exactly where you're talking about.
Which vehicle are you driving, sir?
It's horrible.
Yeah, it's okay, that's fine, but the thing is that, why is that not being done, patched in the right way? It's not even patched, like, nobody is taking care of that, there's no yellow lines. The whole, whole concern I am having is that, like me, others are coming here, how do we ensure that concerns are addressed, actually? Last time, I asked for a governance around the, you know, through that online portal, my request was shut down in one day, without any answer, what, what has been done? I should be given answer that, okay, if somebody is looking into that, this is work in progress, or it's not being taken care, it is abruptly shut down. No answer, no response, nothing. If we have opened a portal for citizens to say, you know, some kind of concern, they have to be addressed in a right manner. We also work on such kind of portal where our user support, they ask us and we do, right? We need to address them, we need to answer them, we need to satisfy them.
Council President?
Go ahead.
If, if, sir, if I can get your number, I can give you an update tomorrow.
Oh, sure, yeah, 862...
You don't have to give it all that, why don't you, why don't you just write it on this, please?
Okay, yeah.
Thank you.
I'll write my name after I get my pen. Good evening, everyone, thank you for your time today. As you must have heard...
You just name your name, sir?
My name is Vamsi Pundla, I live in Glenmont Commons. I am not here to talk about Glenmont Common Roads. I am not here to talk about Glenmont Common roads. I know it's been worked upon, and I trust the process. I just want to confirm and clarify, on behalf of my colleagues, my neighbors were really frustrated about the situation. So to clarify, everyone, what we are talking about, from the Powder Mill Heights, if we come into that area, we take a right, we enter into the Mountain Way. That Mountain Way section, we have that Adat Shalom, the Jewish temple, that road is the one where the, due to the construction that happened for the Mountain Way Estates, I believe some of the council members lived there, there was construction due to which, to lay the drainage pipes and everything, there was so much of digging that happened. Once the construction was over, it was patched up, but it was done in a really, really bad way. So if somebody wants to experience that, I would recommend to drive from Route 10 into the Mountain Way, towards the temple. As we come, we cross up to the Zeke Road, once we cross the Zeke Road, suddenly the road will become, from the blacktop to completely bumpy, extremely dangerous. It is not only unsafe for the two-wheelers, it is actually unsafe for even the four-wheelers. There is no marking of the yellow lines between the lanes, and that entire section where there is an entrance into this construction going on, even that area is also not filled up. I believe that the developer who did that work, they did a very bad job of patching up. Whoever is responsible from the town to monitor that and certify that this is done well, they did not do their job. I'm sorry to say that. So we need that to be fixed as soon as possible for the safety of not only people who live in the Glenmont, but everybody who uses those roads on the Parsippany. So that's what I want to clarify. I think all of you, I know for some reason or other, will drive that side, please take a chance to go through that and experience that, what we are going through. Thank you.
Mr. Leibery, the, I know exactly what he's talking about. Now, that road is in a condition because of that new development. I mean, the work that they had to do for piping and everything else for that, so who...
Yeah, I think we should check with our engineering department to find out exactly what's going on there, because a lot of times, and again, I don't, I don't know, I'm just, what normally happens is when they're doing trench work or something like that, they'll put temporary patches in, they'll put pavement in, so it may be that they're coming back to fix those, but I don't know. And I think that's something our engineering department and building department would have the answer to. So we can get that answer for you and then, and get back to you. But somebody obviously is responsible for that, and I don't know if that was meant to be a temporary, hopefully it was just meant to be a temporary fix, and they're going to come back and repave it. But if it's not, obviously if it's in terrible shape, somebody should come back and fix it. So I don't have the answer for you tonight, but we can get that.
Thank you. Just to reemphasize that point, literally, if we come from the Route 10 side, we will feel like we are in a developed country, up to crossing the Zeke Road. The moment we enter into the Parsippany section of the road, all the way up to the Mountain Way, the park, the roads are really bad. That entire section, even the section that is not currently being dug upon for the construction of that community, Mountain Way Estates, we will still feel that that entire area requires repavement.
Vamshi, could you give your number to the business administrator too, so when he gets that answer, he can, you get right on that piece of paper over there. Thank you.
Good evening, everyone, and thank you for your time. So I'm also a resident of Glenmont Commons, but I'm not here, same way as Vamshi, I'm not here about to talk about the Glenmont Commons. I have been in the townhouse there, I'm a single-family member there, and I've seen the condition of this road for the Zeke, the Oldover Road, and I was thinking about the same, right? Like, what's the difference between Denville leadership versus Parsippany leadership, that the situation of those roads is so bad as you cross from the Denville side to the Parsippany side? There has to be something wrong. And same way, if you look at the Mountain Way Park and compare that to the Central Park of Morris Plains, there is a day-and-night difference. The Morris, the Mountain Way Park is so crumbled, the roads are breaking there, the paving is off, right? So we need to kind of think about, as a resident of Parsippany, what's going wrong with Parsippany, right? Something has to be fixed there. And if you compare with other towns, Denville, all the roads are so nice, and Parsippany is actually suffering a lot. So as a resident, I would like to draw your attention to see what's, what could be done, right? Fix all these issues that have been there for long now. So I've been with these colleagues here for the Glenmont issues, which is, which is a part issue with HOAs and the public roads, but Oldover Road is township, right, fully owned. So has to be something wrong. That's all I would like to say here. Thank you.
Sir, just so you know, Central Park is actually in Parsippany.
That's right.
That's Parsippany, not Morris Plains.
Yes.
Okay, all right. Sounds good, thank you.
Please don't speak out.
Nick Homiak from Lake Hiawatha. One question on this resolution that miraculously appeared on the agenda tonight. Is Mr. Anglino involved in any way with these two redevelopment resolutions? Does anybody know?
Is that your only question?
No, I have something else.
You want to go ahead and ask him all?
No, that was it. I understand Councilman Mosella is going to meet with the Honorable Len Farriello at a tour of the Troy Meadows. Troy Meadows is in our Master Plan, but Troy Meadows actually protects itself. And Bob Perkins from Wildlife Preserves, a man well ahead of his time, saved that landscape before the Wetland Protection Act and everything. So Parsippany, in my opinion, should play some type of greater role in protecting, look at Master Plan number seven, of protecting that resource. Now, I help out down at Troy Meadows a few times a year, and I showed you pictures before of the stormwater, the impact from the stormwater runoff, the magnitude and the volume of the plastic and the styrofoam. And Parsippany is a town in the Passaic River Basin, yet we are not a river-smart or river-friendly town. So we need to improve our perspective toward that resource and the rivers that are around us. Now, they're going to need to see whether we can, hopefully, sponsor these trash nets. And they do exist in many communities, and what they do is they collect the stormwater runoff, but they have to be maintained. So it can be a combination of volunteers and an element of the municipal workforce. And then perhaps when Parsippany actually exposes themselves to this phenomenon, this crime against the earth and environment, you see all the plastics from macro to micro, maybe we'll start advocating for more plastic bans, some of these, to end some of these senseless products. So what I hope is after this tour, we do in fact get these nets, but they need to be strategically located in the Troy Book somewhere before it enters the Meadows. And like I said, it has to be maintained. And then Parsippany should reconsider itself and try to be a river-smart town. We have the Whippenny, we have the Rockaway, we have Troy Book, we have Mazza Book, we're surrounded by water here. I think the name Parsippany means land of many waters, yet we have river-sensitive areas. You see the signs, even the printing on the sign is fading, but guess what? That's where people all dump their trash. That's where people dump their trash. So I would like just for Parsippany to start considering to a new paradigm of management and a master plan to become a river-smart, river-friendly town. And I'm going to try to write an article about it in the local papers, so hopefully I'll be dramatically correct enough for a print to print it, so...
Can I respond to Nick?
Yes, sure.
Okay. Thank you, Nick, because he did reach out and talk to me about it. And I'm going to read Goal 7 from our master plan. It says, "Ensure that any prospective development preserves or enhances the township's environmental features, including wetlands, wetland buffers, streams, wellhead areas, steep slopes, and wooded areas. In particular, the environmentally sensitive areas of Troy Meadows should be preserved in their natural state and future development, and this area should be avoided. We are a riverine area, and this area is going to be affected probably the most in the state from flooding because of climate. And I think with Highlands Conformance, and if we can get back into the Parsippany Sustainable Jersey, we can look for grants to further keep trash by doing what Nick is talking about and adhering to some of the stormwater infrastructure fixes along the way before it even gets that far." So I hope we all can consider this in the near future, especially after we check it out.
Yeah, I was just going to make a comment. That is correct. Monday at 9:00 a.m. I'll be going on a tour there, seeing, you know, what we can do to be more conscientious, if there's any role to play. And once I go on that tour and see what some of the gaps are in how we address these issues today, I can report back to the council what I hear and find.
Thanks, Nick.
So, help me out here. Mayor, you explained the process well, but I want to continue on some of the interaction from the legal representation to these resolutions that are up for planning board review in terms of public disclosure. So the process has been followed, however, the agenda to the public prior to this meeting is starkly different than the one here. And so, what's the rush? If this was happening, and the one was sending it to the planning board, and it came within the last 24 hours, help me understand why, and I don't know if this is a council president, a rural issue, a mayor issue, why not wait for the next Tuesday meeting? So the public is fully informed via internet and wherever they get their news that this is on the agenda.
All right. I mean, that's a council decision, you know, so it's, again, I don't understand, because this is just merely a referral to the planning board. Like, it is nice if you have stuff, you know, a couple weeks ahead of time.
Totally get it. I'm going to interrupt you, because you're telling me something I already know. My, it's the public disclosure aspect, I'm sorry?
I know, I said let you ask all your...
Yeah, no, that is the question. It's the public disclosure aspect of it. Totally get it. You want to send us the planning board. It came in the 24 hours. Now, again, the two agendas look starkly different. Maybe some people would have attended, more people. Right now, only these people know about the 24-hour or the 11-hour addition to this agenda. And again, it's a public disclosure question, whether it's this issue, some other issue, again.
I don't understand...
Can you let the commenter sit down? Or finish up?
Okay.
That's it. That's it. I don't think, you know, from the questions, the man in orange shirt, and then Mr. Venenziya, I don't think we answered that part of the question. The mayor did answer the process question. But again, the public disclosure question has not been answered.
Good evening. Tony Fasano, a question on your tour. Why don't you invite Brian Bergen to it? Because he's the head of the state for flood mitigation, and the state hasn't done anything in 50 years to take care of our rivers, but they keep denying the rivers, but they say rivers aren't being dredged. There are 27 rivers, main rivers in this state that get dredged. The Rockaway River and the, has to start from Mendham back down to the Passaic. When my grandfather used to take me fishing in Denville, right on Main Street, that was between six to eight feet. Now it's six inches to 18 inches. So why isn't the state being held accountable?
That's a good idea, sorry.
Why isn't Brian being invited to it? Why isn't the rest of the state being invited to it? Because they can't say rivers aren't being dredged, because actually Barnegat Bay is being dredged, the Rotherham River, and several other rivers. And they're all state-owned.
That's a good idea. I'll invite him.
Well, he's head of it, so, and he keep, we, the Army Corps of Engineers says, "Well, Lake Hiawatha people, because it's only so many houses, we're not going to do anything." Well, maybe if we start at Mendham and we go to the Passaic, it would take care of the problem, and it would stop a lot of the flooding, the mitigate, water mitigation, and a lot of the garbage in the areas. And our township's having a problem, so is Florham Park. Now the Department of D E P wants to know what they're doing with the garbage that they're taking out of the Whippenny River. That's ridiculous.
Well, we've been having meetings with the mayors and stuff like that, and it's fell on deaf ears constantly. And it all comes down to funding.
Yeah.
And we, you know, we're told we're going to get a certain amount of funding, and we don't get it. And our area, our region, for some reason, seems to get ignored, while other areas, as you know, get the funding. So the mayor is, myself, Mark Taylor from Florham Park, Acegow, I know you know all that, and we've been fighting this battle since I came back in '22. I'm going to continue to fight it. And I'm not going to make any comments on Wildlife Preserve, because we might have, I mean, if I can say it, litigation with them, so...
Yeah, the area, it's basically not involving any transportation, so it doesn't bring any money back for that. So maybe they ought to get, besides having bird figures in, they'd actually do something down the trail.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Fasano.
Hey there. I'm Sumit, I'm the resident of Glenmont Common as well. I know the issue of the road condition on Mountain Way and the intersection of Mountain Way and Oldover Road, you know, has been beaten to death, but didn't want to reiterate that, but a couple of points, I came in late, I don't know if that has been highlighted as well, is that where that new construction is and that intersection of Mountain Way and Oldover Road. Point number one, given that it's a new residence now, which has come up another 100 or whatever odd-so number of houses, number of people, if you see, you know, people have a right of way when they come in from, say, Powder Mill Road and coming into Glenmont Common area, right? But because of the poor markation, which people have highlighted, it's a, it's a big safety issue. Please be warned that there might be a situation where there will be an accident, because there is no marking on where to properly stop. What it also adds to is, again, you know, in this world of social media, we know when police are watching, you know, who's stopping or who's not, and then, you know, they get into ticketing. But there is a lot of frustration among the community who say, "Hey, listen, we stopped." But at the sign where you stop, you basically have no visibility of the crossroad. So at least, if not anything, you could have a safety engineer go there, look at that intersection, at least properly demarcate it. In my personal opinion, I think it should be a stop all the way now, so that everyone stops, and yeah, if you violate that, then, you know, it's a separate issue. So that's point number one. Point number two is that, since you're familiar with that road, right? The road, the Mountain Way road, there is a walkway which starts when the Powder Mill Road intersects Mountain Way. From there, there is a sidewalk way where, right? But then that walkway stops there. It doesn't extend all the way to the intersection of Mountain Way and Oldover Road, right? Why I'm bringing this up is, like, my dad's here, 79 years old, you know, he has friends on a nice day, would want to walk to that small park on, 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 on Mountain Way. But there is no walkway. Now, given that new construction, more traffic... But again, from a safety standpoint, if, if, if that, if that small walkway could have been extended all the way till that intersection, it would have really helped a lot of people, including kids who bike, and they first come on the road and then try to take that walkway. Just trying to point out those two big issues. And again, the third thing is I'm hopeful that the roads in our community, it's been a year, year and a half of constant follow-up. So far, at least from a result standpoint, we have seen nothing. And, you know, that is, you know, at least hopefully one day, you know, taken care of. You know, if there is any update from any of the members, I would really appreciate it, you know? Any updates?
Well, you came in late, but we filed the complaint, as you know. They had 35 days to answer. Their attorney asked for an extension, which are routinely granted, so they have until this Sunday to file their answer, which would mean their answer would be due Monday. So they're going to file an answer, they're probably going to counterclaim against some other parties. So we'll see on Monday, we'll have a pretty good idea where this is going.
So we'll know more after Monday?
Yes.
All right. Thanks.
My name is Satsang Randhelia. I also live in the Glenmont Commons community. My co-resident raised, the last concern that he raised, I got the update. This is the second time I'm coming, I'm just sharing a personal story, which is related to that issue. I have two kids, two and nine. The elder kid, about a month ago, he was riding, and, and you know, there's no park for kids to play in our area. So unfortunately, the kids end up playing in our driveways or riding the bike on the road. There are no sidewalks in the community. And a month ago, my son, you know, on his bike, he was riding, and there was a ditch. It's because the road condition is bad. There's a big ditch on Seasons Glen, filled with water. He could not gauge, you know, how, how deep the ditch is, and he crossed it, and he fell on the bike, and he hurt himself. Incidentally, you know, one of my other neighbors, Diman, is here, sitting here, and he can attest to my story. He brought my son back home, and he was injured on his knee and, and elbow. Luckily, it was not a big injury to him, but this is becoming very common in our community. So I'm just adding one more story for you guys to consider, how the roads are unsafe for our kids. It is not theoretical, right? These incidents are happening every other day. Not every resident is able to come and communicate their personal stories with you. So personally, if, and I've been living here for five years now, and year over year, the situation of the road is deteriorating. I know you guys are working hard towards solving it, and I would monitor this situation. I would keep coming back to get updates from you and see when can we get this problem solved. Okay? Thank you.
Thank you.
Council President, if I may, we have a township traffic engineer. Maybe we should do an assessment, safety assessment with regards to the roads over here, and maybe make that part of our case. So we should send somebody down from our engineer department to do a study on the safety of Glenmont Commons, because obviously what you're hearing here tonight, it's not a safe area to ride, to ride a bicycle, it's not a safe area to walk in, which means it's definitely not a safe area to drive in. So I make that recommendation, and we will contact our engineer tomorrow morning. I don't know, council, what you think, but we have to do something. So, and I, you know, it wasn't my idea, but someone just gave me a really good thought, so I thank them. So we'll do that first thing in the morning, Jenny.
See no one else? Entertain a motion to close open public?
No, no, we have someone, we have someone.
My name is Praveen Chopra. I'm a resident of Glenmont. I've been here for 16 years now, and the roads are definitely getting worse. I mean, I live on the townhouse side. I have a 12-year-old son. He loves riding bike within the community, and he usually goes on the flat roads, he doesn't go on the steep because he's kind of new riding in the community, and it's the same exact thing. Seasons Glen, that ditch, and he fell. Luckily, he was wearing pants, and he didn't have any major injuries. But I think it's a major accident waiting to happen, and I really hope you take it seriously and kind of make, create some solution to fix the roads, because it is getting really worse. And I know we've already heard about so many accidents within Persippany on 46 and near Subji Monday on Littleton Road, so we don't want that within our community. So please take this seriously and have a solution for us.
Good evening, everybody. Elected officials, appreciate what you do every day. We have lots of problems that we deal with. I have been, my name is Deoncer, it's Sherman, I'm sorry. I've been the resident in Glenmont community since 2016, and I have been involved in these type of meetings since then, actually. The very first run-in I had with the mayor and the elected officials then, the council members then, when they were inaugurating the park in our community, I do not recall the name of the fallen officer that was supposed to be inaugurated for, but there was a beautiful sign, the mayor was present, the council members were present, present there, actually, and surprisingly, three months later, that beautiful sign just disappeared, and that park never happened. Had that park been delayed there, the gentleman, senior gentleman that brought the concern that his wife fell on the road, actually, and going through physical therapy, that had not happened. They would have had a really beautiful path to walk around that park, the kids could play over there, and, you know, he would have had an amazing improved path there. Unfortunately, this is Mayor Birber's second term, at least I know, and then Soriana was there too. Each run-in that I had, I requested what's going on with the park. I was not given any kind of update regarding that, actually. And it's so painful to see that, that overgrown vegetation in that patch that could be legalized to beautify our community. We deserve better. We really deserve better, actually, okay? Some kind of resources needs to be placed in our community, okay? We deserve better. Roads have to be improved. Year after year, we just continue to come over here and plead our cases and repeated things that we do not own the roads. Why are we in this mundane agenda of roads are not in our possession? Why are these developers given free hand to develop new communities in Persippany? If they're not finishing their work? If they're not finishing their work? As a homeowner, if I'm opening up a window to a place, I got to come over here and get a permit. Until I close that permit, I do not get approval, okay? Why are these billionaires getting these approvals to build new communities? Why are we suffering for their money power? Do something. Come over. Every time when there's an election, you guys come to our community and promise the whole world, promise the whole world, they'll do something, they'll do something, they'll do something, they'll do something. It's about time, pretty soon there'll be another election, more election. What kind of promises are we going to be coming up with, actually? Our roads matter. Help us. Come on. I mean, same thing over and over. I'm willing to come over here and raise voice for our fellow members in the community, but it's the same record I'm repeating. Do something for us, okay? Do something for our kids. They deserve better. We work hard for them. We come in this beautiful country to make our lives better, but here it is, our members are saying one side as we finish Denble, beautiful roads. What are the resources they're putting in their township? Now, look, as soon as you cross into Persippany, it's disaster, okay? I mean, come on. Somebody has to die for this? For now to get the improvement? Please, do something for us. Thank you.
Any other member?
Manoj Ramagrishna, Glenmont Township. Good evening. I just have one question to the attorney. How do I get a copy of the recent litigation against the builder?
You know what? If you give me your email address, just write it down, I'll send it to you.
Well, isn't that supposed to be publicly available to everyone?
Well, it's, yeah, you could get it from the courts, but I'm just making it easier for you. So you can get it from me, or you can get it from the courts.
No, it's okay. I just, just wanted to know the process.
I'm just trying to make it easy, so.
Just wanted to know the process.
It is public record, yes.
Yeah, okay.
Don't make it too easy.
You can, you can.
Email I'll give to you.
You can give me the email right now, sir.
Yeah.
Just write your email right over here for me, please, and I'll make sure he gets that.
So mayor, I have a quick question for you. Can you commit to, can you tell us what you can commit to or can't commit to for the next few months to maintain the roads? Next month, two months, three months? Glad that you're sending a safety engineer. Beyond that, how do you plan to maintain these roads? Thank you.
Develop this. Develop this. Can you ask me a question, please?
Well, I can't make a commitment to roads that aren't ours, to the developer's roads or your roads. But we have made commitments when we get called up to come down, fix potholes, but the problem is now, we're fixing potholes over potholes that are for potholes. So, but when I get a phone call or I speak to VJ or somebody, we go down and we handle it immediately. Yeah, and that's really all we can do, you know?
Commitment to lawsuits. Commitment to the funds to process the lawsuit. I'll fight it vigorously.
Just a quick one. While the litigation is going on, we don't know how it's going, how long it's going to go on. Where the bitter comes, if snow will be, they will be removing it, it will become even worse. Is there a plan or some emergency stuff that we can fill up those potholes? And at least some of the temporary things keep on going rather than, even if we are not paving the whole street, but at least fill up all these potholes on a frequency basis, and so that some safety is maintained while the litigation is going on? If that will be it.
Any other member from the public? Okay, see no one? I'd like to entertain a motion to close the public session, please.
Make a motion? Second.
Motion made by Mr. Musella, seconded by Mr. Neglia. Roll call. Ms. Hernandez?
Yes.
Mr. McGrath?
Yes.
Mr. Musella?
Yes.
Ms. Neglia?
Yes.
Mr. Karifi?
Yes.
Motion passes. Approval of minutes, approving the minutes for the agenda meeting of September 10, 2024, and the regular meeting of September 24, 2024. Can I please have a motion to approve the minutes?
Make a motion? Second.
Motion made by Mr. Musella, seconded by Mr. Neglia. Roll call. Ms. Hernandez?
Yes.
Mr. McGrath?
Yes.
Mr. Musella?
Yes.
Ms. Neglia?
Yes.
Mr. Karifi?
Yes.
Motion passes. Approval of minutes, approving the minutes for the agenda meeting of September 10, 2024, and the regular meeting of September 24, 2024. Can I please have a motion to approve the minutes?
Make a motion? Second.
Motion made by Mr. Musella, seconded by Mr. Neglia. Roll call. Ms. Hernandez?
Yes.
Mr. McGrath?
Yes.
Mr. Musella?
Yes.
Ms. Neglia?
Yes.
Mr. Karifi?
Yes.
Motion passes. Approval of minutes, approving the minutes for the agenda meeting of September 10, 2024, and the regular meeting of September 24, 2024. Can I please have a motion to approve the minutes?
Make a motion? Second.
Motion made by Mr. Musella, seconded by Mr. Neglia. Roll call. Ms. Hernandez?
Yes.
Mr. McGrath?
Yes.
Mr. Musella?
Yes.
Ms. Neglia?
Yes.
Mr. Karifi?
Yes.
Motion passes. Approval of minutes, approving the minutes for the agenda meeting of September 10, 2024, and the regular meeting of September 24, 2024. Can I please have a motion to approve the minutes?
Make a motion? Second.
Motion made by Mr. Musella, seconded by Mr. Neglia. Roll call. Ms. Hernandez?
Yes.
Mr. McGrath?
Yes.
Mr. Musella?
Yes.
Ms. Neglia?
Yes.
Mr. Karifi?
Yes.
Motion passes. Approval of minutes, approving the minutes for the agenda meeting of September 10, 2024, and the regular meeting of September 24, 2024. Can I please have a motion to approve the minutes?
Make a motion? Second.
Motion made by Mr. Musella, seconded by Mr. Neglia. Roll call. Ms. Hernandez?
Yes.
Mr. McGrath?
Yes.
Mr. Musella?
Yes.
Ms. Neglia?
Yes.
Mr. Karifi?
Yes.
Okay, moving on to presentations and reports. Mayor?
Sure, thank you. As we enjoy the cooler weather and early evenings of fall, our community continues to shine with spirits of togetherness. This year's Halloween events, including trunk or treat and other celebrations, promise to bring fun for all ages. So join me on Saturday, October 26, in Port之一Troy Hills, for our trunk or treat from 1:00 to 4:00 at Smithfield. This is the first year we'll be doing it on a Saturday. It was recommended by a lot of the parents not to have trunk or treat on Halloween. So we changed it around. We're going to have the mayor's pumpkin patch, we're going to have a food, food trucks there. It's going to be a real nice harvest event for, for our citizens. Also, I do want to remind our children and parents about safety. So ensure costumes are visible in the dark with reflective materials or glow sticks. Trick-or-treaters should stick to a well-lit area and be accompanied by a responsible adult. Drivers, please be extra cautious, especially as children cross streets in early darkness. Accompany your child while trick-or-treating or create a neighborhood group of kids under 12. Stay on sidewalks, cross streets, safely at crossroads or corners, and be alert for cars. Ensure your child's costume fits correctly and try to use face paint instead of masks. Only enter homes of friends or family. And discard, because this was when I was a kid, discard any treats that are not wrapped and sealed. In addition to Halloween excitement, I want to take a moment to highlight an incredible act of service from our own community. Last week, brave firefighters from Port之一Troy Hills Volunteer District Five deployed to North Carolina to assist in the aftermath of Hurricane Helene, Helene. This dedicated first responders are making a difference by supporting communities in need during this time of crisis. Let's rally behind these heroes and show our support for the families affected by the hurricane. As the senior citizens continue, I encourage everyone to explore our parks, visit local events, and appreciate the beauty of autumn. Our town strength lies in our unity, and it's inspiring to see how we come together during both celebration and support of each other. Ride free with Port之一Troy Transit, and this is for mostly our seniors. Port之一Troy residents can take advantage of our free weekday bus service. The Port之一Troy Transit system operates two buses, each running on different routes throughout the township, starting on the hour of Morrisville Shopping Center with no fare required. It's never been easier to get around. On Thursday, October 10, I was honored to once again be invited to attend the anniversary meeting of Alpha, I mean Alpha Delta Capumu Chapter. Celebrating 52 years in Port之一Troy, this group of women educators provides scholarships for female seniors pursuing careers in education, donates to the community support programs such as Market Street Mission and Love Like Ashley, and gives generously time and donates to our Port之一Troy Food Pantry. On Friday, October 11, I welcomed Salad House to Port之一Troy with a ribbon cutting located in West Mount Arlington Plaza. Owners Faith Karaka and Erkan Ukyar proudly showed off their new dine-in and take-out establishment. Food is prepared fresh, in order with many options with their salads, and I can tell you right now, the Harvard salad is phenomenal. On October 14, I had the honor, along with representatives from the Order of Sons of Italy, Chapter 2561, to raise the Italian flag at Port之一Troy Town Hall to celebrate Columbus Day and Italian-American Heritage Month, honoring both our rich history and vibrant culture of Italian-Americans. Exciting news in our community. On October 16, I was thrilled to join the grand opening of the Russell Myers Cricket Field, a fantastic project brought to life by the dedicated Morris County Park Commission. A special shout-out to Commissioner John Crickus for leading the charge, and Jigashaw for his support. Over the course of, since '22, Mr. Crickus, the commissioner, has been in contact with[1539.87] Drivers, please be extra cautious, especially as children cross streets in early darkness. Accompany your child while trick-or-treating or create a neighborhood group of kids under 12. Stay on sidewalks, cross streets, safely at crossroads or corners, and be alert for cars. Ensure your child's costume fits correctly and try to use face paint instead of masks. Only enter homes of friends or family. And discard, because this was when I was a kid, discard any treats that are not wrapped and sealed. In addition to Halloween excitement, I want to take a moment to highlight an incredible act of service from our own community. Last week, brave firefighters from Parsippany Troy Hills Volunteer District 5 deployed to North Carolina to assist in the aftermath of Hurricane Helene. This dedicated first responders are making a difference by supporting communities in need during this time of crisis. Let's rally behind these heroes and show our support for the families affected by the hurricane. As the seasons continue, I encourage everyone to explore our parks, visit local events, and appreciate the beauty of autumn. Our town strength lies in our unity and its inspiring to see how we come together during both celebration and support of each other. Ride free with Parsippany Transit, and this is for mostly our seniors. Parsippany residents can take advantage of our free weekday bus service. The Parsippany Transit System operates two buses, each running on different routes throughout the township, starting on the hour of Morrisville Shopping Center with no fare required. It's never been easier to get around. On Thursday, October 10th, I was honored to once again be invited to attend the anniversary meeting of Alpha, I mean Alpha Delta Kappa Mu Chapter. Celebrating 52 years in Parsippany, this group of women educators provides scholarships for female seniors pursuing careers in education, donates to the community support programs such as Market Street Mission and Love Like Ashley, and gives generously time and donates to our Parsippany Food Pantry. On Friday, October 11th, I welcomed Salad House to Parsippany with a ribbon cutting located in West Mount Arlington Plaza. Owners Faith Karaka and Erkin Ukhar proudly showed off their new dine-in and takeout establishment. Food is prepared fresh, in order with many options with their salads, and I can tell you right now, the Harvard salad is phenomenal. On October 14th, I had the honor, along with representatives from the Order of Sons of Italy, Chapter 2561, to raise the Italian flag at Parsippany Town Hall to celebrate Columbus Day and Italian-American Heritage Month, honoring both our rich history and vibrant culture of Italian-Americans. Exciting news in our community. On October 16th, I was thrilled to join the grand opening of the Russell Myers Cricket Field, a fantastic project brought to life by the dedicated Morris County Park Commission. A special shout-out to Commissioner John Crickus for leading the charge and Jigga Shaw for his support. Over the course of, since '22, Mr. Crickus, the commissioner, has been in contact with the township over this cricket field. We never knew if it was ever gonna come to fruition, it did. And I gotta tell you, I still, I still got my swing. So I got up there, almost knocked my secretary's saddle off, but I can still hit a ball, and I felt good. I can't run. Anyway, on Thursday, October 17th, we took action to improve our schools. I met with school board president Andy Chaffo, superintendent of schools Bob Sutter, and township administrator Jamie Cryin, and I toured Eastlake Elementary, Littleton School, Brooklawn Middle School, and Parsippany High School. Our mission was to assess the school's needs and explore how Pilot Dallas can make a positive impact on our children's education. It's all about investing in our future, and we, we went through these schools. We're gonna be doing more, more of those schools. But I have to tell you, there, there's gonna be a really good cooperation between the school and my administration and their administration going forward. In Parsippany, I hope you're ready for the impact because we got our high-density housing numbers. I don't usually say affordable housing, I say high-density because there's a difference. And the mandates that are gonna be put upon the township strain our infrastructure. So Parsippany's numbers were 553 housing requirements. And as you know, builders have remedy for every one, they get to build four. So we're gonna have some tough issues. Now, that being said, not only do we have 553, we also have to carry over 463 units from the last round. So that gives us approximately 1,000 units.
138 from the last round.
Well, that's even better, but still not good. So you're looking at anywhere between 3,000 to 4,000 new units coming to Parsippany. And this is all mandated. So that's why we got involved with the lawsuit with the other towns from Monville to Florence Park, Hanover Township, East Hanover. Okay, so then, over the past several weeks in Parsippany, I joined the vibrant Indian community to celebrate Gerba, which is a beautiful festival that symbolizes joy, dance, and togetherness. The event was filled with lively music, colorful attire, and delicious food showcasing the rich heritage of the Indian community. And I have to tell you, I don't know how many times you can go around the school gym, but it was a lot, and for many hours. This past weekend, I felt the vibrant energy of Ankut Festival, which was this weekend. I joined the Indian community to celebrate this beautiful tradition of gratitude and abundance. Ankut, a joyful festival that honors the harvest, is a time for sharing delicious food, laughter, and cultural unity. It's heartwarming to see our community come together, embrace diverse traditions, and strengthen our bonds. So as you know, November 1st, are you ready to light up tonight? Okay, I'm gearing up to celebrate the Rali with our vibrant Indian community in Parsippany. So it starts Friday, November 1st. So I do want to say this for safety purposes. The state's gonna mandate that no fireworks are to be used because of the dry conditions in the state, as you know. So hopefully those will be adhered to. So the festival of lights, it's not about bright decorations. It's a beautiful reminder of hope, joy, and trump over good or evil. Join us as we come together to embrace this rich culture with delicious foods, stunning performance, and heartwarming traditions. Council president, that's my report.
Thank you. Township council?
Yeah, I have a few things to go over. I just wanted to close out a few items that I've been following up with the business administrator Cryin, who, you know, you know, wanted to thank for all of his help with some issues, but just wanted to close out. There's speeding that I reported on Lake Shore Drive in Lake Hiawatha. It was said that a speed trap was installed. There was also light bulbs that were out by Ferrero's on Halsey Road. And then there was also a dead township tree on Madison Avenue. And also to get an update on the status of the audit of the Board of Education.
Well, okay. You go first, and I'll talk about the tree.
The speed box is out. I don't have the information yet. Chief will be back Monday, and we're gonna discuss it then. Lights, it's in the process of being updated and corrected. Mayor has the update with the tree. And the, as far as the audit goes, I will check in with the CPA and have information for the council tomorrow or the next day.
Okay, with regards to the tree on 46 Madison, I spoke to the resident. And I believe Parks and Forest, she contacted her. I can find out more tomorrow, but just wanted to give you a little update on the status of our trees in Parsippany. Now, I know you talked about a tree on 89 Minnehaha, the road I actually live on. And I know those neighbors pretty well, that, you know, that I did not respond to them over three years ago, which is absolutely false. And I don't know who the resident was that you spoke to, but if after the meeting, you want to give me their number, then I will contact them because nobody contacted me three years ago to talk about a tree on Minnehaha. But I did have a resident contact me on a tree on Minnehaha that I met in 2022 at Walmart during the 4th of July weekend, and they had a concern about a tree on Minnehaha. Came in on that Monday. We contacted Parks and Forestry. They did an assessment of the tree. And a few weeks later, I get a, you know, message back that nothing has happened. It was August 23rd of 2022. And then about a few weeks later, I got a call thanking me and the township for removing the tree. That is the only tree that I was, that talked to me. So I have no clue who this resident is, councilman, but I would really enjoy, like to have the phone number or just let me know who it is, and I will.
No, I'd be happy to. I'll talk to them.
I will visit them, and, because nobody. Somebody contacts me. One thing I have a very good memory on is dates. I will remember the date they contacted me, I'll remember who I spoke to, but nobody contacted me. Now, let's get to the trees. We have right now over 1,000 trees that have to be taken down here in Parsippany. You know what kind of manpower that's gonna take? It's gonna take a lot of manpower. It's gonna take a lot of dollars. So what they do is, they, they, they go in, they assess the tree, and they gotta go by which tree is the worst to take down. And that's pretty much how they do it. We just hired a company, a vendor here to come cut trees down, $50,000. And I don't even know how many trees are gonna be taken down, but it's not many.
Forty-nine.
So 49 trees. So I guess it's a good price when you consider you try to get a tree taken down. Now, it's more than $1,000. That being said, but I, I wanna, I wanna commend our Parks and Forestry Department because they do work hard and they do get back to the residents. Now, on, on 89 Minnehaha, the first complaint that came in wasn't three years ago, it was September 4th of 2024. So that was the first complaint that I saw. But if somebody, believe me when I tell you, if somebody tells me, complains to me about something, I call up. I have it logged in, and not just that, I'll get back to the resident, and nobody did, so. So like I said, councilman.
I'm just curious, if somebody calls Town Hall and they leave a voicemail, does that get logged into our system? Because sometimes, you know, a resident might think that it was documented, but if they called, nobody picked up, or we left a voicemail. Is that documented on our end?
Usually what happens is, if they, they get a voicemail, they'll call back, call back and speak to the resident, and then it gets logged in. If the resident doesn't leave what the complaint is, I would highly doubt it would get logged in, but they would still call back. That's the policy I have in Town Hall. So, yeah, they would, and most of the time with a complaint about a tree, we, we put it into GovPilot, and then from GovPilot, we call up Parks and Forestry immediately. I'm just using Parks and Forestry. It could be any department. What we do is, we send it to the professionals that handle these department and these complaints. So that's pretty much what happens, like pave roads, potholes. We don't, you know, we send it to DPW or, or anything to do with the new construction going on in Lake Hiawatha. We send it to our engineer department. So, but Parks and Forestry is, and I, and I use them for a reason because they're doing a great job for being pretty much understaffed. And, you know, we're trying to do the best that we can, but most of the residents, I have to tell you, when we explain everything to them, they're actually pretty amicable towards our, our situation.
Any other member from township council?
Yeah, I do. I have a few comments. So speaking of trees, the Parsippany Environmental Advisory Committee is working on an education program for the library in January, it'll probably be on a Saturday with some activities, to educate the township on trees and the upcoming tree ordinance whenever that comes to pass. Also, the Traffic Advisory Committee would like to offer assistance in the township's goal on educating the public on your work with safety in the town. So if you have anything for them, they're more than happy to comply. With recent NJDEP regulation changes, our open space report may be needed to be updated. So we talked about this, Jamie, before the meeting, and so you kind of stole my thunder here a little bit. Maybe the Highlands Council can help fund that because being in Conformance, they will pay for that. But in, with that also, I would like, and I think it's important with the next round, we're having this massive housing coming up. The Highlands Council could also do an ERI, which is an environmental resource inventory, which a lot of towns already have, and it's very expensive, but they can pay for that too. And I've asked about this for a couple of years now. It's a useful tool, and it's usually expensive to create. The ERI is an inventory of our natural resources and sensitive areas. Most towns have this inventory, and again, at this time, I think it may be useful. And I just wanted to know if we will be meeting with the Open Space Committee anytime?
Yes, we will be. We're, and that'll be for a reason. We're looking at property to possibly purchase.
Okay. A couple of things. So we talked about adopting those obligation numbers. They're gonna have, we have to have a plan by January 31st, and then the developers have a month to challenge that. Will we be meeting as a council with some of the departments or the Board of Ed on a plan for adopt, like, adopting those numbers for that deadline?
Well, we, we have to, first, we have a township planner that specializes in the affordable housing. He'll come up with what he believes is fair, and that would be shared with the township council. I don't think it would be shared with the Board of Education, but we would, I would be meeting with the Board of Education to let them know about the numbers. And what we're looking at here, and I already have spoken to the president of the Board of Education with regards to our numbers.
Okay, I just was, I wasn't sure what the process would be this time. All right, and finally, the Parsippany Green Team was close to Silver Certification in 2019. With Bronze Certification and the completion of our energy audit in 2019, we received $20,000 for, for an award for a study. We might have to return that money because we lost our certification. It's gonna take time to get back that certification now. And with the energy audit entitled our town to Energy Improvement Savings Plan, to submit a request for proposal with energy service companies. The process governed, would be governed by the New Jersey BPU requires the plan, and it would only be if you yielded positive savings. So if Parsippany did not make money, we would not do it. And we estimate that that plan could have saved Parsippany about 200K per year over the last four years. And I think it's important that we consider doing this. And then for the Green Teams on water, given the issues we are seeing in our critical waterways, the Troy Brook and the Rockaway, it would be prudent to take advantage of Highlands Conformance, Highlands Council Conformance, and the Parsippany Green Team grant opportunities to seek stormwater management plan that can help mitigate problems. Just to, just to give a handout to the town, to help. I know it takes a little bit of the town's resources too, but you also have a lot of volunteers. I hope we can consider doing these things. We haven't met in two years on these. Do you think we can meet soon, Jamie?
Yes.
And mayor, please, and president of the council?
Sure.
Okay, because I'm waiting. Thank you.
Any other member from council?
Just, let me make one more comment, the council president. While I was touring the schools, I went to Eastlake, and that's where I went to school. Now, from Eastlake, I went to Brooklawn Middle School to do an assessment. I'm going to ask that, I meet with the committee, Matt McGrath and Frank Neglia, to discuss some of the findings, if that's okay with you.
Sure.
All right, thank you. Any other member from council?
Yep, so I just have a couple of things. So upcoming ribbon cuttings with economic development. We have Craftman's Farm coming up this Saturday, October 26th. They're at 2352 Route 10 West at 11:45 a.m. That painter, one, is Friday, October 25th, at Eight Campus Drive at 11 a.m. And LaPlancha Restaurant, Saturday, November 2nd, 44 North Beverwick Road, 10 a.m. Public is invited to attend ribbon cuttings and an opportunity to meet the new business owners. Next meeting of the Economic Development Committee is Wednesday, November 13th at 6:30 at 90 East Halsey Road, third floor conference room. Public is invited, please RSVP with chairman Frank Cahill at 973-559-6000. And the Transparency Committee did meet on the 15th, and we appreciate the mayor and Dave Miller from our technology piece, as well as all the people. We did have a couple members that are gonna go and change, do different things. So we are gonna be looking to also accept some, some offers to come and join the Transparency Committee as well. So we do not have another one scheduled. I think we're gonna probably do it next month, so we'll have that updated at the next council meeting. That's it.
Any other member from council?
Yes, Mr. Cryin, I see on the agenda, non-consent agenda, we have the contract for replacement of the roofing, et cetera, on Lake Hiawatha Library, provided it gets passed tonight. Can we get that on the fast track? Being the bad weather's gonna start coming here pretty soon.
Definitely.
Thank you.
Any other member from council? Okay, township attorney?
Go report this evening, council president.
Business administrator?
Thank you, thank you, council president. All right, council, just real quickly, I was touched on about the affordable housing numbers. We, our planner and our redevelopment council are, they've begun the process of evaluating the DCA numbers and methodology. And there, you know, there's a lot to unpack. They're going over it all, and they will be, we will be meeting with them, and they will be having something ready for the council to discuss their findings. So this way, we're all looking at this from, you know, an informed standpoint. We are currently working on the best practices inventory. It's due at the end of the week. It's the, basically, it's the, you know, the state has a scorecard that every municipality has to take part in, and it, while it's not perfect or it's not exact, it does put all municipalities on, on a level playing field with questions. And you have to reach a certain threshold, this year it's 35 points, to get a full state aid. If you don't hit that threshold, you could, you know, potentially put your state in risk. So Len and I are working on it. We're working with the department heads, and we'll be talking about the exact numbers at the next meeting for you. And on Friday, when we submit, I will circulate what we're at, and so the council knows. We had a bond sale last week. Very happy with the results. $66 million bonds. JP Morgan, there was seven bidders. JP Morgan came in at the last minute, right before it closed, came in at 2.97%, which is incredible. We didn't expect to get under three, so we're very happy with that. The smaller bond was a bit higher at 4.75, 4.74, and there were only two bidders on it. That probably had to do with it being a smaller bond and not as much interest. But, no, these are positive things for the township to be able to have money out there at a very low rate for us. So it's a low cost to the residents over the next, you know, few decades. So it's a great thing.
It's okay if you don't know, but what portion of that $65 million will now be at 2.97?
I couldn't tell you exactly, but that's, that's, you know, the down the middle blended, that's the neck. So that's the blend of all of them. So I, I would say more than half.
Okay.
And with that, we had, discussed at our last meeting about our meeting with Moody's, and they're still very impressed with the direction the township's going after a few years of skepticism about us. So we're in good shape there, and it's nice to have independent authorities telling us that we're moving in the right direction. Two weeks from today, we have election day. There's, the voter registration deadline passed, but the early voting begins on October 26th through November 3rd. The last day to apply for a vote by mail or absentee ballot, whatever you call it, is Tuesday, October 29th. There's more information on the county website, or on the state website, or you can reach out to the clerk's office as well. They have all information regarding elections. We have the trick or, trunk or treat as Mary talked about on Saturday. Should be a good event. We also have our last farmer's market coming up on Friday. It's been a great success, and very highly, they'll appreciate it, can hit the last one. We've heard a lot of good reports about it this year, and it's been a great success overall. And that is all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Cryin. My report, just to piggyback off of your report with regards to the election, which is upcoming in two weeks. The polls open at 6 a.m., they close at 8 p.m. We have 39 districts, as most of you know, 20 polling locations. If you don't already know your polling location, you can check your ballot that you received in the mail. If you still need assistance, you can contact my office, and we can direct you to the appropriate polling location. If there are any other questions pertaining to elections, you can always. If there are any other questions pertaining to elections, you can always contact the clerk's office. Moving along now to ordinances. First reading, there are none, and the non-consent agenda. R twenty twenty-four, one seventy-four, authorizing a contract for replacement of the roofing, sofit, fascia, and gutters at the Lake Hiawatha Library. Motion to approve?
Motion. Second.
Motion made by Mr. Neglia, seconded by Mr. McGrath. Roll call, Ms. Hernandez?
Yes.
Mr. McGrath?
Yes.
Mr. Musella?
Yes.
Mr. Neglia?
Yes.
Mr. Karifi?
Yes.
Motion passes. R twenty twenty-four, one seventy-five, authorizing the purchase of seven Power Pro Two High Configuration Stretchers, accessories and maintenance. Motion to approve the resolution above?
Motion, second.
Motion made by Mr. Neglia, seconded by Mr. Musella. Roll call, Ms. Hernandez?
Yes.
Mr. McGrath?
Yes.
Mr. Musella?
Yes.
Mr. Neglia?
Yes.
Mr. Karifi?
Yes.
Motion passes. R twenty twenty-four, one seventy-six, authorizing and requesting that the planning board undertake a preliminary redevelopment investigation to determine whether a delineated area of Block Two O Two, Lot One Point One, Two Sylvan Way satisfies the criteria for designation as an area in need of redevelopment for non-condemnation purposes. Motion to approve the resolution above?
Motion. Second.
Motion made by Mr. Neglia. Who seconded that? Mr. Karifi? Roll call, Ms. Hernandez?
No.
Mr. McGrath?
Yes.
Mr. Musella?
No.
Mr. Neglia?
Yes.
Mr. Karifi?
Yes.
Okay, it's a vote is three to two. The motion passes. R twenty twenty-four, one seventy-seven, authorizing and requesting that the planning board undertake a preliminary redevelopment investigation to determine whether the delineated area of Block One Seventy-Five, Lot Five, Ford Get Hall Drive satisfies the criteria for designation as an area in need of redevelopment for non-condemnation purposes. Motion to approve?
Motion. Second.
Motion made by Mr. Neglia, seconded by Mr. McGrath. Roll call, Ms. Hernandez?
No.
Mr. McGrath?
Yes.
Mr. Musella?
No.
Mr. Neglia?
Yes.
Mr. Karifi?
Yes.
Okay, vote is three to two. The motion passes. Moving on to approval of payroll and bills list. CFO Leonard Ho recommends authorization for payment. Authorizes payment of the October twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-four regular and miscellaneous payroll estimated at one million six hundred and fifty thousand. And number two, payment of bills from voucher list of ten fifteen twenty-four through ten seventeen twenty-four, which is three million nine hundred and five thousand four hundred and twenty-five and fifty-one dollars. Motion to approve the authorization for payment above?
Motion, second.
Motion made by Mr. Neglia, seconded by Mr. Musella. Roll call, Ms. Hernandez?
Yes.
Mr. McGrath?
Yes.
Mr. Musella?
Yes.
Mr. Neglia?
Yes.
Mr. Karifi?
Yes.
Motion passes. Can I please have a motion to adjourn the meeting?
Make a motion.
Motion made by Mr. Musella, seconded by Mr. Neglia. Roll call, Ms. Hernandez?
Yes.
Mr. McGrath?
Yes.
Mr. Musella?
Yes.
Mr. Neglia?
Yes.
Mr. Karifi?
Yes.
Meeting is adjourned. Have a great night, everybody.